Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will call the Truth and Taxation meeting to order at this time. Is there anyone who has not picked up one of the handouts on the table there? If you don't have one, please get one. I think it will be to everyone's advantage on what we're talking about. We need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Kerry. The agenda is Public Information and Citizen Input Regarding the 2014 Budget and Tax Levy. I have a few preliminary comments I would like to make at this time. Property valuations for 2014 have been mailed. Tax notices for 2014 will be sent at the end of March 2014. The proposed budget for 2014 shows a levy increase of 3.53 percent over that of 2013. New construction growth last year equaled $55,855,300 or a 1 percent increase. The net levy increase equals then 2.53 percent. Market value of property increased $500,974,500 for a total of 9.1 percent. Clay County receives a payment from the state called County Program Aid called CP8. For 2014, Clay County will receive from the state of Minnesota, $2,891,447. The handout that you have in front of you shows a proposed Clay County 2014 tax levy This levy supports total expenditures of $63,183,184. The following pages that you have in front of you show individual department expenditures and the change from one year to the next. Real estate tax projections by market value and Clay County levy history. This public meeting is concerning the proposed budget. And at this time, I will ask our administrator, Brian Bird, to make some comments in reference to the handout that you have in front of you. Right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Does, I know there's a few people that came in late, or not late, but we got going right on time here, but do they have the handout? Everybody has the handout because that's what I'm going to refer to during this, just this little discussion. Our county auditor has put this together, and it's pretty self-explanatory for the first several pages. It does talk about the individual department budgets. It talks about where the revenue comes from, where the expenditures go in the county, and that's what we're talking about tonight. But it seems like the questions usually go from the concern of the budget to concern of the valuations of property. And I thought I'd just go through a couple of the charts that are in this handout. And the first one that I would like to refer you to is on page seven. So it's, let everybody kind of page to page seven. It's not going to take many minutes to go through it. Okay? Everybody's there? And what it is, it's fairly simple. I'm just going to take our time to go through it. You'll see that this is for the city of Morehead, probably not a soul in here from the city of Morehead. I don't know that, but we're going to use it as an example. And if you look at that, you'll see the two columns of 2013 and 2014 there. And then it says market value. The first market value on there is $139,900, and it shows a market value of that for 2013 and then for 2014, same difference. And then if you follow that down in that first block, it says change under that market value, and it's a total reduction of $53.80. So the city of Morehead, on a residence of $139,900, their tax is going down by 3.16 percent. Now, in the next column, you'll see it says county, and that resident tax for the county share is going down 6.72 percent. The school is going down 8 percent, down 8 percent. That resident will pay. Now, if they live in the city of Morehead, this is the proposed tax prior to the Truth and Taxations. The city of Morehead's tax is going to go up 9.62 percent, and you've heard some discussion about that. The Economic Development Authority levy, it's a small levy, so a few dollars affect the percentage quite a bit, that's going up by 40.3 percent in the city. And then the watershed, again, is a smaller amount. That's going to be reduced by 20.02 percent. So again, the net effect to a Morehead resident, their overall tax bill is going down by 3.16 percent. Now, these are just, the other examples are, they're just of higher value properties, and it's fairly consistent. The percentage varies a little bit, and that's because of homestead credits and things along those lines, but we won't go through theirs individually. Now, your first question, and maybe it isn't even a question on your mind, you probably all have rural property here, you're saying, well, if taxes are going up somewhat, the levy dollars, who's paying for it? I think you know, if you're here, the ag land is paying for it. It's been a big shift this year and last year in ag land values, and that's where they're paying more the tax. And the resident is seeing, the residential property is going down, not in value, but their value is going up. It's either stable or going up slowly. And you know yourself, ag land has just gone like this. So that is causing the shift from a residential property owner to a ag owner in this state. Now, we're going to go through an ag example. If you want to go back to page 10, I'm trying to go through this quickly because you guys know this, and this is just to show you on the charts. But on page 10, we'll let everybody get to there. This is a general real estate tax. And if you see the first column, the P-2002, that means pay 2002, and then it progresses up to pay 2014 in that first column. And the tract of land here is 400 acres, and there's ag land, but there's also a house on it. This is just for example purposes. In 2002, that value of that 400 acres with that house on it was $501,900. That person paid $4,025 in tax. That's over and about the fourth column there. Then, if you move over, there's no percentage increase in there, but the tax rate that year on that $501,000 of value was at a rate of .802. So if you multiply that rate times the value of it, you'll see the tax comes up to $4,000. Now, if we move back to the EMV, the estimated market value of that property, that's in the second, I'll say the second column because the acreage is really the second column, but we'll pass on that. We'll call this estimated market value the second column. You can see as you progress through the years, 2004, 2006, '08, '10, '11, '12, '13, '14. Now, 12 years later, the value of that 400 acres of land with that house on it is valued at $1.88 million. That's triple the amount, or over triple of the amount 12 years later. That's a huge increase. No surprises there. If you move over to the percentage of increase, and this is only from 2013, on this 400 acres there was a 31.43 percent increase in that valuation. The taxes that that person will pay on that property this year for 2014 is $9,072. And as you notice, the 31 percent increase in the value of the property, they're paying 26.4 percent increase in their taxes from last year. That's a huge percentage of increase. We know it, you know it. That's why you're here. The tax rate, however, was .481, just a little more than half of what it was in '02. So, and then there's another column there that I think is important. We won't go into a lot of the details. Some of you know this by heart, others may not, but the limit, the homestead limit on that is $1.5 million. And what that means is that on this ag property right now, the state gives a .5 rate, which is a half a percentage rate on the first $1.5 million. Anything over that $1.5 million then goes to a 1 percent rate. The rate doubles on your property. So if you sit with $4 million of land, you get an exemption, you get, half the rate is up to $1.5 million, and then it doubles after that. That's why this parcel right here, if this farmer adds, or this property owner, doesn't even have to be a farmer, they add 200 acres, their taxes are going to be doubled because now the rate is double of what it was for the first $1.5 million worth of value. I think that's extremely important when you see these jumps in your evaluations, is it's not just the value of the land, but because the, that homestead of $1.5 million doesn't keep track with the inflation on that property that has been going up. And then the only thing, the last two pages is just a financial comparison, and it shows where Clay County is in relationship to other counties in the state. If you want to just, I guess, the second line on the first page, it says net tax levy, and it's a per capita one. This was in 2011 because this comes off the state computers, and it's $407 per citizen in the county, and we sit at 75 out of 87. So in other words, there's 74 counties that pay a higher tax rate per capita than Clay County does. And, Mr. Chair, with that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Laurie, do you have any comments at this time? Gentlemen, we'll open it up for questions, and if you have a question, could you come up to the microphone and identify yourself, tell us where you live, and we will try to answer them as best as we can.
I'm Dennis Arneson from Holly, Minnesota. I suppose somebody's got to start, so. You know, when Warren Doherty was county commissioner and later when he served in the legislature, I argued with him about homestead tax credit because my theory was that you give an tax break to the people that want the services. Bear land, what does it want? Basically, nothing. But it has a value, and because it has a value, it's taxed, and if you don't pay the taxes, it can be taken away from you. So you're really forced to pay taxes. The ability of that land to create revenue or income has nothing to do with it. Or it does, but it doesn't guarantee anything. But the people that want the services that government provides, like schools, law enforcement, roads, and you name all the services that government provides, you guys know that, everybody does, we get a tax break on that, on the homestead or where we live. But that's the area that wants the things that government provides, and I've never been an advocate of homestead tax credit because of that. And I know that evaluation, I was kind of surprised at some of these figures because the mill rate is going down. To me, if you double the value of land and you need the same amount of money, the mill rate should drop in half, and it just seems to me like farmland is making up a lot of the extra revenue that's being used. My house in town this year dropped 10 percent. My farmland went up, I don't, went up 5,200, went up 7,000 last year. It's almost tripled now in the last few years. And I don't know what's on store for '15, but I don't think it looks good for 2015 either. And I don't know, I just, I guess you got to vent your feelings, and that's about all. I don't think I'm going to accomplish much tonight, but I'll feel better.
Dennis, you have some very legitimate concerns, and these rates come from the state, basically.
Well, it seems like everybody passes the buck.
That's right.
You know, last year, I was assured the assessor had made a mistake, so I came up here, and we'll get this straightened out. It wasn't a mistake. Well, then they refer you to your state legislature, and when I talked to Paul Markirk, you know, the state was in financial trouble. They came up with $2 billion of new revenue for the next biennium, I think. I mean, the farm machinery, we're taxed on parts now, that didn't happen before. I think any license you buy is a few bucks more. I have no answer, but it's interesting.
We thank you for your input.
I'd like to comment, Dennis. I couldn't agree more with what you say about the revenue that is produced on a farm should have nothing to do with how much your taxes go up. Just like it doesn't have anything to do with how much any business in town, just because their sales might quadruple, it doesn't mean that they're going to pay more in real estate tax. Neither should it be for somebody who's in the ag business or producing. The difference here is that it's clear that the reason ag values have gone up is because of what it's been generating in terms of prices per crop, right? Wouldn't that be a fair statement to say?
Those land sales.
Yeah. But the land sales, the reason that those prices are high are because those, that land is producing more dollars in revenue. So the catch-22 there is that in your business then, and what we have to deal with, is we have to value properties based on comparable sales. And your sales on all your ag land is now higher because the ability to earn is higher with the increase in product. So I don't know that that's fair, but that's what it is. The, you know, this, some of these shifts aren't created by the county, but they are created by the state. And you say everybody, you can point fingers at everybody, but that's how it works. The best thing that we can do constantly to try to help keep your taxes down is keep our budget in line on what we spend. That's the best that we can control here as a county board.
John?
I think, Kevin, that argument that you made would have been more true last year because it was good income on the farm last year. This year, it was quite different, and it's going to take several years before that's going to change the taxes because we base our taxes this year, and we pay next year on this year's assessments and so on. So that's that argument that it's going to generate more income, and that's why it's going up. Certainly, it's not going to be true in the next couple of years.
And I agree. But I would think if you look.
But wouldn't it in turn, if it doesn't generate more income, then people may be less willing to pay those prices per acreage, and then in turn would lower your taxes because the value would shift and go back down.
But it takes several years to do it.
Anybody else would like to be heard at this time? Thank you, Dennis, by the way. Please come forward if you would like to be heard.
I'm Wayne Lepper, also from Holly. It seems to me that when the state or any government body, the farmer is, well, less than 1 percent of the population, so he gets the poorest representation. And it's shifting that the taxes, if the tax only goes up, say, 2 or 3 percent for the county, it's very unfair to the farmer for his taxes to go up 35 percent for the year. I got in my pocket a proposal that of 169-plus percent increase on a piece of land, plus that has been raising every year for the last 10 years. My, if you take out the income from last year's crop, the ability to pay the taxes has not gone up along with the demand, nor has the tax, I mean, the amount that the government unit, be it local, county, or state, they haven't increased their spending, so I mean, in proportion. The state is, or I mean, the tax rate or the tax income is being shifted over to the farmer because, in my opinion, he's the smallest, the smallest group. He gets, the politician is going to get re-elected by making things more favorable for the mass of the people, and in this case, the homeowner is getting a decrease in taxes, and they're shifting it over to the farmer. And I think that's unfair because the person that works in, at a job, be it whatever, they don't tax his lunch pail, and that's about the only expense that he has. Well, everybody has a vehicle, so that's immaterial. He has no, the worker has no stake in the amount of taxes, where the farmer has to have the land in order to make his living. If he don't have the land, he don't have the income.
Wayne, thank you for your input. Much appreciated. Anyone else who would like to be heard at this time? We'd welcome your comments.
What the heck. Get a lot in my chest, I'll feel better, I guess. Has anybody looked at?
Could we have your name, please?
Mark Blackway, Holly.
Thank you, Mark.
The farm business management projection for next year on crops? Anybody? No, this doesn't very good. But, you know, I get whacked with 65 percent increase in taxes when I factor in 139 percent on one parcel because I've run over the $1.5 million. It's going to keep on doing that, keep on doing that. And Wayne has got a good point. There's probably 1 or 2 percent of us that are land, ag land owners, farmers, one vote. And I realize it'd be political suicide if somebody tried to change this outdated system. It's been this way forever, right? When four families lived on a quarter section, it was a rural area, and you get a residence where their property tax on their home goes down 10 percent. Why not even it out a little bit? Bring it up, or else give us some votes for every few acres we have so we can, we just feel helpless, you know? It's the system that's got to be changed. I don't know. You guys can change it, the state, somebody, I've talked to Markirk agrees, but political suicide. Who's going to do it? And then if there's this, if you live on the farm and you want to retire and go to town, quit farming, then your taxes double, which is a penalty on top. You end up in the home, paying for the home, and your property taxes double because you had to move off the farm. Is that fair? The only thing on the cash flow that shows any profit for next year is beans. Sugar beets are in the toilet, 200 bucks almost. So, I don't know. I got a lot on the road down here, but I start taxing people instead of land.
Mark, thank you for your input. Anyone else who wishes to be heard at this time? Anyone else who wishes to be heard?
Kevin Martin, Morehead Township. What is the average dollar-per-acre figure you are putting on farmland?
Assessor.
Nancy. 3614, I think is what he gave me. Yep, that's the county average.
So I have a hard time believing that one quarter split in half, one side gets a 99 percent increase and the other side gets a 29 percent increase.
In the taxes?
Yes.
Could you speak to that, Nancy?
I'd have to look at Chief Sodan. How much revenue do you have? Is it?
If you have individual questions like Kevin has, I would suggest you, after the meeting is adjourned, you, Laurie will be here, stick around, you can ask those on an individual basis. Is there anybody else who would like to be heard at this time?
Mr. Chairman, Mike Asstrm, Mullen Township Commissioners. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you. Just a couple of questions first. You said the tax rate is set by the state. Did I catch that right?
The class rate.
The class rate is, and the value per unit is set by the county assessor. So since, no matter what we say as rural landowners about the increase in our taxes on a per-acre basis or per 400 acres or whatever unit we want to use, that isn't going to happen here tonight. So I would like to propose we open a dialogue. How does it get to the next level? Now, I have some, an unfair advantage here. I asked Laurie for some information prior to this meeting, and she has been busy, but I got it tonight. So what this, what I asked for is, what are the taxes on a per-acre basis in Norman County? And what are they in some of the neighboring counties that are along the Red River? And of course, we have a lot of noise in this kind of chart because we have different valuations. But looking at, just perusing it quickly, Norman County with 83 or 84 percent of the value has just a little over half of the taxes on this hypothetical 296 acres. So my question to the audience and to you five is, how do we get to the same rate as Norman County or better yet? How do we get to an Otter Tail County? Maybe our goal should be, since the only thing you can control are expenses, is let's have a dialogue. How do we get the tax rate to the? How do we get the tax rate to the lowest level along the Red River Valley? Along the Red River. I hesitate to compare to anything in North Dakota. They have some advantages that we will probably never see. So I think that's unfair. But to sit here and say, my taxes went up by 50 percent, 30 percent, 90 percent, you're not going to change that. It is what it is. It's formulaic. It's driven by sales. It's driven by land sales, not crop sales. It's not driven by revenue, although I agree with the statement that, what does black dirt want? And I can tell you one thing, black dirt doesn't make kids. Houses make kids. So we know that's unfair, but it is what it is. So I would ask the five of you to tell me, how are you going to get the per-acre tax rate, the equivalent of Norman, how about, better, lower than Norman County? I would like to have that dialogue. I'm not here to have you listen to me. I'm here because I would like to have that type of dialogue with this group. Is that possible tonight? Or is it just a, Mike's going to sit here and tell you what he thinks, and that's it?
You ready to have a comment? John? Well, Mike, you know, it should be the same, and I don't know why different counties are going to be different, because everybody's supposed to be basing it on between 90 and 105 percent of actual market sales.
Commissioner Everett, before you go on, excuse me for interrupting. But I want to be fair to the process, and Lori has just given me raw numbers. I don't know if we're comparing apples to apples. That's part of what we need to get to. Because to be fair to the county, to be fair to the landowners, we need to understand if we're talking about the same thing. So I'm not saying these are those, but we need to dig down and find out what are, what is apples to apples. Anyway, my apologies for interrupting.
That's fine. The one number that Brian did give, that I think does compare us to the rest of the counties, it says that there's 74, we're 75th out of 87, as far as, so it means that 74 have a higher rate of taxes than we do.
That's a per capita, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Okay. So I think that adds noise to the argument that we are still higher than the counties around us.
Yeah, and I don't know what-
So while I applaud that, what would be wrong with being 87th out of 87?
Oh, no.
I mean, if not us, then who? So let's get back to, we can't change some of the fundamentals, and we can't change the game plan that was implemented, I don't know, 100 years ago, 80 years ago. But you can change how that translates through the tax formula into the checks that we write.
By lowering our budget, you're saying. That's what we're here for. You're supposed to suggest to us how we can lower that budget.
Then I would say, if that's what I'm here for, then I would charge this body to lower the budget so that the tax rate on a parcel of ag land is the lowest along the Red River Valley corridor.
Well, what are we going to cut? That's the issue.
You know, I can stand here and tell you to do that. You ran for that chair, you ran for that responsibility, and it would be unfair of me to say, just slash it. But what is fair of me is to ask the five of you to justify the decisions you've made. If, in fact, we're paying 50 percent more than the neighboring county, what are we getting for that? And I would welcome that discussion, and perhaps this isn't the form for that. I understand that there's a limited amount of time here, but if we can get that discussion rolling, I would greatly appreciate it. And with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your time.
Mike, thank you. You have brought up some very interesting concepts, and I'm sure everyone sitting in the audience agrees with you on some of the items, if not most of what you have just said. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to be heard at this time? Anyone else who would like to be heard? Come up again, sure.
Mar Blackway, Holly.
Yep, Marv?
Maybe you guys could go to the other counties and figure out how they did it. If you wanted to know how to do it, they're doing it. That's all I got.
Thank you, Marv. Anyone who would like to be heard? I'll ask one more time, and if no one wants to be heard, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. And anybody who has any comments or any questions on an individual basis, please stay afterwards. Anyone else would like to be heard? John?
I just wanted to say that I did get a call last night from a farmer who wished, couldn't be here, and he wished to have his concerns expressed, and he's the same concerns as the rest. He's got 1,000 acres of land, and he does take advantage of the homestead credit for 1.5 million, but his taxes are $35,000 now this year on 1,000 acres. It's $35 an acre. I don't know where the rest do come out per acre, but it's high. It's ridiculously high, so it's something that we need to look at. But I, you know, without changing state laws, I don't know how we can do it.
You know, there's been some really good comments here, and in terms of our budget, I think the commissioners up here know that I probably, and our department heads in our county probably know that I scrutinize everything that comes up here probably more than anybody for the purpose, because I believe also that we should have as low a rate as we can have in the county. But we still need to be able to provide the services that everybody expects. Having said that, the comparison with Norman County, it's an interesting concept, one that I think is deserving of some looking at. But Mike, you did make the comment, we're not sure if we're comparing apples to apples and apples and oranges. And I think when we get down into, and we have a difficult time looking at our own budget now, and we're going to start looking at ours and trying to figure out what somebody else is doing, we've got double the work to do. But I'm not saying that's such a bad thing either, but that's going to take some time. But I think there's been really good questions raised about why is Norman County able to have the rates that they do when compared to what we have. I can tell you that we worked hard at keeping our levy increase to that low amount of 3-point some percent, and that was before our growth. And where a significant part of that comes is, is paying our employees, and also the health care costs. Those are the two major things that are even why we have to, are spending more money than we normally do. Those are the two major factors that we deal with. And we've gone through some years, we had two or, was it two or three years in a row where we had zero increases for our employees. And we can't continue to do that. And again, somebody mentioned about, well, maybe can't compare perfectly because we got North Dakota on this side doing different things. Well, you know what? Those people from North Dakota are snatching up all of our good employees if we're not careful. You take a look at the city of Moorhead's engineering department, it's been decimated, because they can't keep up. They can't pay what North Dakota's paying, so they're losing all their good employees. So we've got to try to protect, you know, the people we have working for us that are providing a good service. But Mike, back to your question about looking into what other counties are doing, I think it's a good one. And I'll certainly question that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Campbell, I have a suggestion. It would be presumptuous of me, and I'm not trying to double your workload. You have a number of citizens who are concerned. Would it be something within the realm of possibility to perhaps have an ad hoc task force or committee to dig down, take some of the pressure off of the commissioners, maybe educate some of us on the ag side, and perhaps do a little digging, and maybe we can together come to some, a few answers. I throw that out as a suggestion. It's for you to decide. Thank you.
Mike, thank you. That is an excellent suggestion, and I can assure you, we'll take it into consideration. One last time. Anyone else who would like to be heard? Brian?
Mr. Chair, and they're just comments, is all they are, and they're good for discussion points, but unfortunately or unfortunately, we sit in a county that is sitting in a metropolitan area. If you look at our bill compared to a Norman County, Wilken County, even Ottertail County, our social services, we take about $7.5 million of our local tax levy to help support social services. And you get some of those things with a bigger city. Our law enforcement, we have about $6.5 to $7.5 million budgeted next year for law enforcement services. A good share of that goes to the jail. We have over about 120 prisoners on a daily basis, and unfortunately, that comes from a metropolitan area. It bleeds over here, and it falls on the backs of the ag land right now because of the value switch. So, yeah, the ag land is carrying some of the disadvantages, say, of a metropolitan area, but, is that old trade-off again? But you take those two right there, you're looking at just about $12, $13, $14 million of the $25 million levy. So it takes just a huge chunk when you're dealing with a metropolitan area. And I know that doesn't explain it, it's just food for thought on it, so.
One last time. And this tax shift, and I don't think it's fair either. I got my tax statement, and I see mine, even though we're spending a little bit more in the county, my residential tax went down a little bit. And then when I hear what's going on, I don't think that's fair either, and I don't think it should be that way. So I don't know how, what can be done at the county level, because it's going to take a combination of discussions through, whether it's AMC, Association Minnesota Counties, working with the state together, that maybe there has to come a point where such a wide range just should be somewhat neutralized in these. Look, like Commissioner Everett said, these prices that right now you're getting for your ag land, and based on the crop prices you're saying that are out there now, you're probably not going to be able to get those kind of values for your property. So at some point, that's going to come back down, then the tax shift's going to work the other way. But how can it be more fair is a very valid question. For somebody to end up, for me to have a 3% or 4% or 5% reduction in mine, and somebody else, like you said, has just got black dirt, is getting 40% or 60%, it's, I can't make sense of that. So somewhere, I think all of us here on this board would agree that, if there is a way that we as a county could do something about it, we would try to do it, but it's not that easy.
Well, it's certainly true, that we're working with a system that's over 100 years old. I mean, real estate tax basing funding for county government and for cities and so on is very old. And when it was started, it probably was a more fair system, because most of the wealth was in the land. Nowadays, you know, that's not necessarily true, that there's all kinds of, and most income comes from others, other sources than the land. And it's maybe time for the state to be looking at whether or not this system of real estate taxes for local government is something that should be discontinued. To make that change is mighty difficult. You have to find some revenues, you know, you're going to raise income taxes to the point to cover it. I don't know what the answer would be, but we certainly see that it's not fair at this point. There's no question about that. And I wish we could do something about it, but we're required to assess land based on market values, and as long as people are still willing to pay those kind of exorbitant prices for land, far above what makes sense to me. It, you know, this is a system we're stuck with until the state laws are changed, and that's something we can advocate for and try to find ways to do. But, you know, I'm not very hopeful that it would change very quickly.
Further comments? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. We're adjourned.